At precisely 7:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, April 14th, March, I'm sorry, 2025. The meeting is called to order precisely at 7:00 PM as I mentioned. Let us begin, as we begin all meetings, with the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that brief moment of silence, please. So we have a relatively brief, relatively brief agenda this evening. We begin this opportunity with public comments. Does anyone sign up for it?
We have one signed up for public comments, Dan Anderson.
Okay, great. As you approach the microphone there, Dan, please announce your full name and address and the matter to which you wish to speak to us this evening, and you're limited to three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Dan Anderson, 7411 Second Avenue, Sykesville. So I came here, I guess, through the last Mayor and Town Council meeting to talk about the upcoming elections and to make a plea to let's like, let's keep it clean. And I know Councilmember Keenan said the same thing, and I know we all echoed the same, but unfortunately, I just, you know, I feel compelled to come up here again. I mean, even with three weeks out from the elections, we already see like organized campaigns and kind of like attack, kind of dirty campaigns going against the Mayor and Town Council and always on the same theme, which is reiterating the fact that Warfield is suing the town. And basically that means it needs new leadership. And you have Steve Whistler and State Delegate Tomlinson and all these people and plus a lot of fake accounts, seemingly bots, saying the same thing. And I just think this is like beneath the town. And, you know, I mentioned last time, there's paid professional consultancy, political consultancy firms going door to door. And yeah, I already talked about all the things leading up to the, you know, making yourself known if you were going to be a candidate, but you know, this does seem to be very organized. My fear frankly is that the people behind it are Warfield, and that concerns me greatly since the Town of Sykesville is in active litigation with them. So, you know, again, I know that there's an ethics committee in, for the town. I would urge again that the town would really look into what's going on. And obviously, you know, the mayor and any of the, you know, sitting council people that are running can't, you know, can't be involved with that for obvious reasons. They can recuse themselves, but I mean, the town has a lawyer too. I think there should be some, I don't think this is getting the level of scrutiny or alarm that it should be. And I know, Joe, I've received a few times via email, and I know you said there's very limited definitions of conflict of interests for candidates, right? And I understand, you know, but this to me strikes me as much more concerning than some contractor who does occasional business with the town, right? I mean, this, if my assumptions are correct and the assumptions of others, and Warfield is actively behind this political consultancy firm and funding them, then what does that mean for continued litigation with Warfield and the outcome? And it'll, you know, throw a pail over, in my opinion, any new, any new people that come into office, and that's not what you want. So I would again urge the town to really consider and investigate what's going on. This is, uh, this doesn't seem right. And it's coming from, you know, it's, again, three weeks out, we've already seen some of this, and there's always this campaign about the town, you know, Warfield suing the town and oh my God, and therefore we need a change of leadership. And I disagree wholeheartedly, but I mean, just on the facts, but regardless, this seems to be very organized and it obviously has a very clear purpose, is to get people that might be more favorable to Warfield developers presumably. And that's just, that doesn't sit well with me, and I know it doesn't sit well with others. I mean, the town's had its say, we don't want that, we don't want all that housing and all the things they have. Anyway, there shouldn't be those kind of ugly politics in town. So again, please do what you can, because, you know, we don't want to have to be dealing with the aftermath of that, which I think would be really, really ugly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I know it's unorthodox for anyone on the council to comment to a public comment because it's not on the agenda, and so all I will say is I have similar concerns for those who might find interest in running to serve their, their community in the future, but be hesitant to do so because of a climate that just isn't hospitable to, to that kind of everyday Joe or Joanne running to represent their neighbors. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Dan. Our first order of agenda business is our consent agenda, which is inclusive above our minutes from March 24th, is that right? Yes, 2025, and as well as a reappointment of, I think I have it here, we've got two people, Chris Sevitt to Parks and Rec.
Billy.
And Billy, thank you so much. Are there any questions or concerns or reason for debate of any kind?
What are the terms for Billy and Chris? Because I didn't know if they've been on there a long time, right?
Yeah, they have. I'll let Joe answer that question, and then I actually have an interjection to make to answer that question.
They both have been on there very long, and I guess the odds of both of them completing those three year terms is, I guess maybe, I don't want to say up in the air, but again, they've, they've served the community for a very long time.
Yeah.
I think, I think 20 years is, is a target for them. But again, I don't think any official decisions have been made exactly on when that, that might happen. So again, we wanted to go ahead and get them reappointed.
Terms three years from today.
Terms three years.
Yeah.
Is it, is it every two years or every one year? Some people show up, yeah, stacked, it's alternated.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
So you can't have a mass exodus, even if the people who have put 20 years in are ready to call it, it's, should be staggered.
Staggered, that sounds like a problem.
And I also believe that they're both very conscientious about that and not leaving anyone stranded, so, yeah. Any, any other further questions?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you. Councilman Grassley, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Guro, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. That brings us to new business. We have two proclamations. I am going to bore the hell out of everybody here at the table, and I'm going to read them because they're that important to me, and I hope just as important to those of us who are sitting next, next to me. The Earth proclamation goes as this way, whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated on April 22, 1970, with the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources, and whereas it is the responsibility of each of us to safeguard the environment by recognizing that all human life depends upon the earth and upon one another for our mutual existence, well-being, and development. And whereas the steps we can take to protect and preserve our natural environment through education, partnerships, and positive action should be encouraged in the Town of Sykesville. And whereas the citizens of the Town of Sykesville are committed not only to the protection and preservation of our environment, but also to the restoration of ecosystems and habitats. And whereas the Town of Sykesville citizens, staff, and elected officials are always working to find ways to preserve and improve the town's ecosystem and overall quality of life. And whereas the Town of Sykesville proudly recognizes all who participate in Earth Day for their dedication to taking a proactive role in shaping the future of our environment and in protecting the town's natural resources. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Sykesville that April 22, 2025 is Earth Day in the Town of Sykesville, and all citizens are urged to be mindful of local, state, and national laws which protect our environment and to join in efforts to preserve the beauty of the land, skies, and water of the earth. All in favor, or do we have a motion, I guess we should start with, to approve the or adopt the proclamation, the Earth Day proclamation?
Motion to adopt the Earth Day proclamation.
Thank you, Councilman Keenan.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield. Any need for debate or questions? And I'll call for a vote, all in favor of the adoption of the Earth Day proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The proclamation is unanimously adopted. And if you'll give me a moment to read.
This one's a little shorter.
This one's a little shorter, but equally as important. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in the state of Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Sykesville that Friday, April 25th, 2025, is designated as Arbor Day, and that the citizens are urged to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So the motion is made by Councilwoman Schofield and seconded by Councilwoman Keenan. Any need for questions or debate?
I think there's, it's typo.
There is, and I.
Okay, all right.
I did point it out, it's missing a T in hearts.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And the signing, the copy that is printed for signage this evening is corrected.
All right.
Thank you.
I had a couple of thoughts in reference to this. A couple of years ago, when we were at MML, we actually, there was actually a discussion around tree canopies within communities. And actually, communities that have a nice tree canopy are actually seen as a place of, that's better to live than those that don't. And the mayor mentioned that they can reduce overall temperatures. Actually, the temperatures can reduce by two to nine degrees. So in the middle of a 95 degree summer day with 95% humidity, two to nine degrees means something. It also means costs, but even more, we have a stormwater management thing that we've done in town, and one acre of trees can actually absorb thousands of gallons of water. And one of the things that we noticed in a sister, a sister town of ours not too far away, is that when they cut down their trees or overdeveloped, it actually caused major damage over a course of a couple of floods to their actual community. And so having a tree canopy is also something that's super important. And then one other thing, you mentioned the cooling costs, it's actually a 20 to 50% savings in reference to that, and there's known benefits for mental health and well-being. And I bring it up because there are folks in the town that do cut down their trees, and I just want to make sure that folks understand the benefit of actually having the trees in the town. They have to be managed, of course, but it's one of the things where expressing the need and the reasons for it, I think are very valuable. Thanks, Mayor.
I appreciate you, thank you for the comments. Now we're ready for a vote on the motion to adopt the proclamation.
Parks and Rec.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that Arbor Day proclamation has been adopted unanimously. That brings us to the announcements and reports section of our agenda. I just didn't want us to get out in 15 minutes before we go to close session, so that's why I read those for everybody. So I'll start with the announcements. The first is that the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 28th, and that we have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing guard, on the police auxiliary, and on the Board of Zoning Appeals, which I can happily and excitedly express to everyone that we did receive a letter of interest from a resident today to fill that position on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I'll be meeting with that resident actually tomorrow afternoon. Anyone listening and interested in volunteering for the Town of Sykesville, please email town@sykesville.net for more info. Brings us to our staff updates, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll be off today, just giving a psych out to Derek and the Department of Public Works for their annual bulk, free bulk pickup day yesterday. It was another successful round of bulk pickup. We had a couple of extra volunteers that helped out, that was very nice.
Thank you, Joe. Joe was one of them, yes.
It just sounded good for the mayor.
Yes, because he hides from cameras. I actually love them.
Not a fan of getting photographed.
He was a little antagonized, if you saw him.
Yeah, I had those guys. So again, thank you to the Department of Public Works, also wanted to say thank you to Area Refugees, who, they started helping us several years ago with bulk pickup. It's been a big help, you know, not to say the guys don't need to come in on Saturdays and work all day, but you know, having that extra crew out there with Area Refugees does cut down the hours that we allow on our crew. So again, like I said, another successful bulk pickup, the tonnage was a little lower, it was right around 20 tons that we collected around town. We think the scrapers the night before probably had a bit of a field day around town, so again, as long as it doesn't go into the landfill is a benefit to us.
Thank you, Joe.
A quick update on the streetscape project, obviously the demo work continues on the south end, the parking lot is in Baldwin Drive is obviously where Main's closed. We should see the concrete forms for the new curb lines go in this week with hopefully the pouring of that concrete early next week. So again, we are hitting the benchmarks that we expect to hit, and again, just kind of moving that project forward. I know it's, it's tough for everybody, especially on the south end right now, just because there is a lot less parking that's available, but again, the project seems to be progressing the way that we expected to.
Thank you.
Springfield Avenue, just a quick update, we had a walkthrough with the state highways last week, just to point out the last few punch list items that are necessary. There will be final striping that I believe is scheduled later this week, so again, that would be nice once that's completely tidied up.
Finally.
So that is the last, last step, hopefully on Springfield Avenue is the striping. And the only other thing I wanted to say is just to give everybody a heads up that at our next meeting, we will be introducing the budget for FY '26. So I know everybody looks forward to the budget meetings and the talking about numbers, so just get ready.
So when are we, when will we receive a draft of that budget? Is it going to be a little bit earlier, or is it going to be the same Thursday, Friday before the meeting?
I'd probably get it all the way earlier if everybody wants that.
Yes, we can do that.
If it's okay with you.
No, it's absolutely great, I think it's a good idea, it's a lot to digest.
Try to get it out maybe even later this, maybe later this week.
Okay, great, thank you, Joe. That exceeded my expectations for that answer, that's great.
I have some questions about the parking changes with the changes down on Baldwin Drive. I've had some people just respond to me about the, as beautiful as it looks, how many spots are we losing? And, you know, people concerned about that.
Yeah, we did the, the final count, when we extended the kitchen for Sykesville Station, we lost an additional four. So there was four that was, we were going to lose when we were just doing the project, you know, without that kitchen extension. With the kitchen extension, it was an additional four, so it's an eight, a total of eight parking spaces that we did, that we are reducing the overall parking count by.
And then with the plans in the, in the future to expand the parking lot itself and offer more parking.
Right, so I've shared that there are plans, but we don't have timing on it as far as I know, right?
No, not, not whatsoever.
Okay.
The ultimate goal is obviously to expand the parking lot to the, what is that, the west?
Yes.
But right now, obviously, that's the least affordable.
The idea that we actually have a plan is monumental at this point, considering the multiple parties involved.
Right.
There are a couple of other spots that are likely to go away with the expansion of the French Twist. There's six parking stops there, those could also be lost behind.
But those are those parking spots, or at some point she had tables out there?
They're still out there.
Are they?
No, no, the old table.
No, but that space that, that she was using is, not all of it was parking, but yes.
Okay.
There are six spots there now, it's six parking spots.
We've been down those six spots for a very extended period of time because of the outdoor parking, outdoor seating, yeah.
Those are the spots in between the French Twist and mailbox.
That's right, like where the mailbox is, yeah.
So the extension's going all the way to the mailbox?
I don't know if it's going all the way there.
They requested six.
But all the parking is likely to be used, that's right.
So it's going to be important then that we keep people updated?
Cool.
That was all I had.
All right, thank you very much. Any more questions for staff at this point? No? Okay, that brings us to the treasurer's report, I'll call Treasurer Jen to the microphone, please.
Jennifer Loxie, I'm here to report the March 2025 treasurer's report. I had a couple of questions come in. The first question is, is that it looks like our utilities are increasing, and we've been on budget, but as of July 1st, BG and E increased the rates, so we probably will go over. It is said that the gas prices are an average of 9%, so thankfully.
Natural gas.
Yeah, so hopefully we're past that part, because we get heat natural, from natural gas, and the electric is 7%. So we see, see a small increase, but it's not going to be crazy. The other thing that we have is, we had a $3,000 expense for roads, and that was a pothole that's an unexpected expense.
Sinkhole.
Yeah, it was a sinkhole, and, and the reason why we set it out aside is because it's like one of those one offs, and we don't, now that we're preparing the budget for 2025, 26, we won't, we want to exclude that from the budget. And then the last thing was, is that we went over our budget for the parks and rec, and we've realized like, there's a lot of things that are show and wear and tear, and it's spring, we have a bunch of people renting out the pavilions and everything else, so we invested and, and replaced swings, picnic tables, and we're actually have a deposit for the fence around the splash pad, so we are going to probably continue to increase, but it's another one of the things, it's not necessarily going to be like, like exuberant, because a lot of the things that we invested in, we, it really made a huge difference.
And it hadn't been done for a very long time.
It was, we were a little overdue on some renewed one replacement.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, the swings and stuff, yeah.
Yes.
The rentals for the pavilions, are we, last year, did, we exceeded what we had budgeted in terms of expecting for that, so where did we?
You mean revenues on the revenue side?
The revenue side, yeah, so does that offset?
It doesn't offset the entire expense, but I mean, it's, it's, I want to say we were averaging around $5,000 a year in pavilion rentals, and now we're averaging about $10,000 a year. So again, it's not a dollar for dollar offset, but any additional revenue was good. Again, some of the, some of the improvements that Jen mentioned, you know, it's, it's like surfacing in Jones Park, you know, that, that kind of thing, that's been turned around for several years. We finally were able to find a contractor that can do like spot repairs instead of, you know, wanting to charge us $30,000 to replace the whole thing. So it's like, these are, those are like little items that just add up.
And we might even possibly have even more income increase because we, we implemented that we're now accepting credit cards. So instead of having to come in from eight to four, we can actually take payments over the phone. We actually did our first payment on Monday, where we accepted, we got that, and we haven't had credit card payments since.
We were finally joining the credit card.
Yeah.
Welcome to 20,000.
Right, so, I mean.
1580.
So we can, so I think that that will also help too, because I know that at times at four o'clock makes it very difficult for people to stop by and pay, so we can just do it right over the phone and send them an electronic invoice and everything with, and we put notes about the date and everything, so I think it should be good.
Been around 20, 30 years tops.
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm set it at 40. Don't raise your expectations.
So I know that, yeah, I know that you, so the road repair and patching, that's been in there before, and then was it taken out because we never really expanded it? So this is, this is why it went back in, is just because of the $3,000 sinkhole?
Yeah, it was.
It's typically a category that we used to budget, you know, just to cover, you know, pothole repairs or this and that. We had started doing that as part of just our annual paving.
Okay.
So it just kind of all got clumped in with like highway user revenues and things like that, but because we went over highway user revenues this year, we wanted to put it in a separate category.
This, this sinkhole was big enough to swallow her car, the president's car. And so even if we had budgeted for it, it would have exceeded that.
And where was it?
Well, right on the corner of, are we talking about the one on, on Warfield, or are we talking about the one outside of Reviving Company?
No, no, this was on the north.
That one on north, so then there's actually been three in each calendar year, singles, yeah, yeah. Okey dokey. Thank you, everyone.
Actually, Joe, I have a question, face to face, you genuinely, that brought it off to mind, this splash pad. I know we talked about possibly notifying like the large daycare groups about.
The buses?
Yep. Is that in the works?
It is, yeah, yeah. Again, it's not to say they won't still show up, it's just, we're going to try to keep it limited to maybe, you know, one, one or two trips a week instead of every single day.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Leo. Okay, that brings us to our public safety report, LT, please.
Any complaints you have?
There's a lot of questions, it's something to say.
What's that?
We're going to miss, we're going to miss his question.
My question.
Yeah. I'm here to talk about the, I do not at all deem that how that sounds.
That's, that's pretty funny, right?
No, no, I was agreeing, but not sarcastically. I'm here to talk about the public safety report from March 18th through April the 6th, 2025. In that timeframe, we handled 743 incidents, 11 assist other agencies, 16 community policing initiatives, had two disorderly persons, 56 foot patrols, 15 house checks, 404 patrol checks, 67 traffic enforcement initiatives, 17 trainings, and three welfare checks, again for a total of 743 incidents. Did you guys get my email about the questions? Okay, I didn't dig any of that stuff.
Thank you.
That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Anybody have any other questions for Lieutenant?
I have two.
Yes, sir.
Over the weekend, there seemed to be an increased police presence in the general community, mostly it looked like traffic enforcement sort of things. I saw sheriffs out, I saw the state police out, I even think I saw some of our police that were pulling people over. Was there any special event going on over the weekend of any kind?
I don't think anything special. I know we have grant, grant funds available, so it could have been us out working, you know, enforcement overtime.
Okay.
And I assure these waves come to every department in the county, so that very well may have also been initiative that they were working, but I don't know anything off the top of my head per se.
And then the second one is, is a bit more sensitive of a topic, but I'm wondering what would happen. So in previous experiences I've had, you know, and we've talked about it here, there's sort of like a joint, whenever there's something going on, there's a joint coordination about if, you know, something's going on.
Emergency preparedness, are you speaking?
Yeah, it's like emergency preparedness. But in this particular case, I guess I have an interest about if a federal agency were to come into town and knock on someone's door, arrest someone, do something along those lines, would they communicate with a local department necessarily?
Generally not.
Generally not?
Yep.
So we learn about it after the fact?
Yep.
Okay.
That's been my experience.
Thank you.
Some of those things are, even with, with our allies, not necessarily in the county, but the state police has an investigation. They, they generally do not give those, that information out prior to, because they're very sensitive as far as what they're investigating.
Okay, so like a sheriff even, or a, would a sheriff do the same thing?
Depends, depends on what it is. If, if it is a, like a drug investigation or something like that, then we generally don't know. We, we, we won't know that information prior to.
All right, thank you, Mr.
Lieutenant, I just want to let everybody know in the public that we still offer a service that if you're going to be away for an extended period of time, you can do a house check.
Yes, ma'am.
So they would just contact the police department?
Correct, yep, and you can fill those forms out there, I think you can find them online, if not, we can fill it out for you and post it.
With vacations and so forth coming up, I just wanted to make that announcement.
And we did 15 of them.
Or you could wait until it's broadcasted in the newspaper that you're out of the country.
Yes.
That's happening. Is there, is there any other questions for Lieutenant?
Another question, I just want to apologize, because a couple of meetings ago, I jokingly referenced that the foot patrols seem to be focusing on the firehouse creamery, and that has seemed to stop, so I want you guys, feel free to stop in there every once in a while.
No, no need to apologize, but if it's up to me, I'll be there every day.
I just noticed on the foot patrols on the last two reports that.
We're trying to get them to vary them up a bit, but.
There's incentives to visit every stop on Main Street. Some are just tastier than others. That's all. Yeah. Thank you.
That's it.
Very good. And Officer Bond is in the gallery and I want to thank him for his traffic enforcement.
Thank you, folks.
As well as your community policing that has increased and we're all appreciative. Thank you. That brings us to my updates. No, we'll start with you guys. Go ahead.
There was a planning commission last Monday evening. There is a hearty agenda, but we actually got through it pretty quickly. First item on the agenda, actually, we actually moved it to the end. But nonetheless, the first thing that's on it was in reference to the parcel B recommendation by the Board of Zoning and Appeals. This is to build out the assistant, assisted community home over on the Warfield parcel. The planning commission did approve that. So we're looking for, the next step is what a site plan to come in from the applicant.
It's the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So that's right. They're going to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals next. They wanted to have that approval. They wanted to know what the outcome of planning commission was going to be before that meeting. And I think that's on the 29th. 29th. Thank you, Joe. And then there was another plan that came in. It was a preliminary plan for the enclave. We did approve that plan. There was also the introduction of the French Twist property and building out of that space there. It looks actually really good. It'll help that business in town. And then there was a last one in reference to Schoolhouse Road. And there's a small dwelling unit about 700 square feet, just under 700 square feet, that they're looking to put in place. And they came in with a, I think it was a preliminary plan. It was actually a site plan review and we approved that as well. So if you have any interest, you can do a playback. It'll take 20 minutes.
Great. And as I understand it and for the edification of the public listening in, that 700 roughly square foot unit is intended to be used as like a meeting space, offer IT, or I'm sorry, offer Wi-Fi and opportunity for residents to make use of it. And also like an office space for the management company that's now.
Yep. Yeah, so I mean, I'll just read what the staff report said. It's a staff, staff's understanding that the building will function as a community gathering space, leasing office, and provide computer workstations for the residents.
Awesome.
So a nice area for the community. And the building looks absolutely gorgeous in terms of the site plans that we've seen.
Thank you, Councilman Scofield. Anything from you?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
So we had a great turnout this weekend for the service hours and cleanup. We had to move because of weather from Sharon Run down here. But Drew can't say enough amazing things.
Power out.
He did a really good job, yeah.
It was amazing.
I think it was his first actual event.
It was his first service, yes. And so he actually fit, I would encourage even more people to attend and join us. He finished with a nature walk and a new app, or an app he was showing us that you could identify any, well, they had to be alive. He did try it on a dead tree first. It didn't work. But.
Just trees or all fauna and flora?
Everything, everything. I think it's called iSeq is the app. So it was very cool. He did say, don't ever use it to eat. He was very clear, like.
It's not for foraging.
It's not, no.
Copy.
Yeah. But to identify things and just his knowledge of, even off the cuff, of like what's around here was amazing. So all the kids that showed up for service hours, he actually took them out into Little Sykes Railroad and did a nature walk. So it was really cool. And then we just have meetings coming up, but, because movies don't start until June 14th.
Thank you. And I just want to build on something you said about the park cleanup event. I had spoken to Drew and he said 30 people showed up, to be exact, which is.
And given the, like the change in location, like they just seem to keep.
Very well attended.
I was just, there are always people coming.
And I mention that because his immediate reaction was, I need to find more for us to do if we're going to have that big of a crew, that big of a team of volunteers. And so he's already coming up with ways to give more volunteers the opportunity to volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's amazing. Thank you.
It was really wonderful. So I mean, just a great hire in addition to the town to have someone really not only focused on it, but so passionate.
Yes.
About parks and trees and then what he can do for, you know, to improve things here for all the residents. It was really fun.
Just got the whole package. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Mayor, if I could just add on real quick to the parks report is that this Friday is the Easter egg hunt.
Oh, sorry.
Well, that was, you do this every time. It was part of my update. So now.
I was trying to do it on the download because I think we already have enough kids attending. And I think the more we. Yeah. So it'll run for about 10 seconds after for anyone who's been there.
No, it's true.
It's like.
Our Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission is in our gallery and sitting out there shaking her head. One of us are about to lose our lives at some point.
Exactly. It's not pretty. Yeah, they are pretty quick on their feet over eggs.
We do separate out the children's ages, so the little ones, the wee ones can't get trampled by the bigger ones.
Right.
We also hope to unveil our new sound system during the event. So hopefully we'll be able to actually.
Control the crowd?
People can hear, well, they can hear you, but I'm not sure the kids will listen. I mean.
Oh, they're going to listen to the mayor.
Yeah, well, I'm going to have the volunteers on, so. Good luck.
All right. Councilman Grassi, you got anything from Historic District Commission?
So the Historic District met Wednesday, March 26th, my goodness, it seems like three months ago. They had four items that they approved. There was a discussion on a color palette for some of the things that, I think there was a picture that they're like, that really doesn't look good, but they talked to them and all four of them were approved.
Thank you.
DSC, just briefly, this Wednesday, April 16th at 6:00 PM is planting in the Main Street Garden. Follow the Sykesville Eileen Merkel Garden page for updates and volunteer opportunities. And for everyone here on the council, mark your calendar for Tuesday, April 29th, 6:00 PM to do a celebratory walkthrough of 7611 Main Street. So you can see the progress and how it looks.
Fantastic.
April 29th, 6:00 PM.
Long awaited, but will be very much worth it.
Yep.
There's a lot of obstacles to overcome.
That's Tuesday. That's the day after our next meeting?
Correct. Words for Development, the Executive Director and Board Member Jen Banks are attending the National Main Street Conference in Philadelphia today through Wednesday. And will come back with a ton of ideas, I'm sure. Please support the downtown Sykesville connection by joining our volunteer crew and/or purchasing event tickets. Everything's available on our webpage. And just a reminder of the, I know it's not called the Force of, Let Freedom Ring Parade competition that's being called the Unity Float Showdown for neighborhoods to get together and make their own individual floats as part of the parade. Just a reminder for that. Apparently this says copyrights, Maryland link. I'm not quite sure what that means. I guess this was your idea.
It may have been my idea.
Okay, so just a reminder for people to start thinking of their ideas for the parade because that's honestly not too far off at this point.
It is not.
Probably about two months away, two and a half months away.
Yeah, I'd encourage any and all neighborhoods to gather themselves together and come up with, at least create a think tank of sorts and then come up with a good idea and show your pride of being American and an American in Sykesville, so.
Yep. And I'd like to acknowledge one of our candidates for council is here tonight, Alexandra Reese. She's been here at several of our council meetings. I just want to point that out that we have one of the candidates here tonight.
Thank you.
You've been here at least the last several months for the meetings, correct?
No, it's about a year.
Yeah, yeah. You're just so quiet back there. You're so quiet back there.
She's taking it all in, Leo. And she still wants to do it, Leo.
We actually have all of the candidates for council here.
Here.
Yeah, no, you can't see him from the podium.
No, I can't. I'm sorry. Who else is here?
Garrett.
What? I'm sorry?
Garrett.
Your Garrett's.
Arm your.
Okay. And?
Garrett, arm your.
Okay.
Very cool. Thank you. I did not know who you guys were either. Did you say you're candidates for council?
No, no, no.
We're just up the street.
Oh. You just said that they're all candidates for council here.
No, no.
Oh, you said there was three.
No, 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 no. I'm just pointing out, I mean, obviously we're already here. Okay.
Call the order?
Okay.
Point of order. Okay. So my updates are a brief, one about, I'll piggyback on what Joe said about our DPW and being a part of the bulk trash pickup day again was ever exciting, but also very enlightening. We've got a, we've got a crew who, they're not just slinging trash. They're actually making thoughtful decisions about whether or not something should go into that truck and offering recommendations to individuals who are, who own that trash. If they're, if they're present to say, you know, this is something that could be picked up by, restored by, and get a second, a second life instead of being thrown into the landfill. Once, you know, rain hits a sofa, no matter what it was like, the condition of it before the rainfall, it's bound for the trash then. So I am taking this opportunity to not only commend our DPW staff, but also to make a PSA again that yes, every bulk trash, we will pick up. We will have an opportunity for any resident to contact Westminster's chapter of the nonprofit Habitat for Humanity and their, specifically their restore retail side that will come and pick your couch up. They will pick up your refrigerator. They will pick up anything that would otherwise go in the landfill that is of use for another home or another family. They'll even take construction materials. So that includes two by fours, two by sixes, two by tens of any length. There's no minimum. They'll take it all as long as it's usable. Drywall of any size to go on and on, trim, so on and so forth. So if you've got a basement full of stuff that you think you're going to need one day, like the mayor, and it's been 20 of those years of thinking that it's probably time to give it to somebody that will actually use it more readily. So, all right. Because we put a lot of that stuff in the trash and it upsets me. The other update I have is, or I guess that wasn't an update as much as a thank you and a plea, plea. My other update is reminding everyone that there is a public forum being held on Thursday evening. There will be two separate public forums. They will be held back to back. One will be for all council candidates, town council candidates, and another will be for the two mayoral candidates. And the questions, the deadline for submitting those questions has come and passed today. So just for the edification of the public, all of the questions that were received will be handed over to the mediator who is volunteering to do such. He works for the Carroll Media Center. He has done this job of mediating forums before, just not ours. And so he's familiar with the processes and is sure to conduct a fair and open process. He will choose the questions himself. None of us will see those questions ahead of time and it should provide for a very delightful evening of entertainment. The forum will be streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel and also to our Facebook page, to the town's Facebook page. So it'll be available for playback as well if you are available from seven to nine.
Mayor, it'll also be on local cable, channel 19 and HD 1086.
All right, thank you. So that's wonderful. So that's all of my updates. I would like to let the audience here, the gallery, know that we are going to go into closed session after this. And I need to, by law, report what it is we are going to be discussing to a certain extent. The meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B, Number 8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And in this case, the litigation with Warfield. And so I'm about to call for a five minute recess and that'll allow the gallery to clear. And then we'll, we'll be going back into open session and then into closed. So thank you for everybody's attendance. A motion for recess, anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, here we are.
All in favor?
All in favor.